Good morning and welcome to the March 20th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This morning, since it's the last regular meeting before the month of April, I've invited representatives from Environmental Resources and Sedgwick County Fire District One to talk about the April burn ban.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Earle-Wine with Environmental Resources. It's that time of year again for the ranchers in the Flint Hills to start control burns, and that's to get rid of the woody plants such as red cedars, and also to promote grass growth to feed their cattle. Unfortunately, all the smoke created by those burns also causes other problems. Back in 2003, the conditions were just wrong, and the smoke from the Flint Hills caused some cities in Kansas to go over the ozone limits, and also as far away as Tennessee, there were cities that went over the ozone limits. The smoke traveled that far. Because of that, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment got stakeholders together to study the issues and came up with a smoke management plan for the Flint Hills. That included education for the ranchers on when to properly burn, and also an interactive website so they can determine the right conditions so smoke would stay in the area and not travel out of it. But this also included an April burn ban for 16 counties, which includes Sedgwick County. That ban was enacted by the state legislature in 2011, so we cannot have open burns in Sedgwick County in the month of April. Now, open burns includes brush and tree limbs, anything you might put into a pile on the ground and set a match to. Also, you cannot have lagoon burns, where even the fire department cannot have old structures put on fire for training. The reason for that, or the items I just mentioned, can be done any time of the year and doesn't have to be done in April. But in April is the best time for the conditions for the plant growth to come up to feed the cattle. So because of that, I'm here to remind people that if, even if they have an annual fire permit, they cannot have open burns in the month of April. And would you like to add something to that, Robert?
Sure. The impact to the citizens of Sedgwick County Fire District One should be fairly minimal. As Susan said, it will try to delay the burning of brush piles and lagoon burns, but as far as residents that are able to burn household trash in five-gallon barrels, as long as they're on a five-acre tract, that is not affected by this. Citizens that want to barbecue or use a gas grill to cook dinner, that's not affected by this. And as long as you're using a chimenea or one of the above-ground, like a fire pit or something that you would buy at a box store or make, as long as your fire is roughly three foot around and flames two foot high and not on the ground itself, those type of recreational fires that are non-permit required burns are still allowed to take place. So really, the main effect will just be delaying the brush pile burning, and any maintenance of lagoons will be the biggest impact.
And agricultural burns can still...
Yes, agricultural burns will be allowed, the grass crop clearing, pasture-type stuff, and those burns are not held to the daytime hours. They're allowed to burn those after dark as well, which in Kansas, most people know that's when the winds generally set down and you'll get a little more consistent burn, rather than during the day when the heating and the gusting is taking place.
If anyone has questions on whether they can or cannot burn something, they can go to sedgwickcounty.org to get more information from our website. They can call me at 660-720-5. We're Robert, 660-3473, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. And we'd happy to answer any questions from the commissioner.
Do we have a question? Commissioner Meitzner. Susan, thank you. And I think that would be good for our newsletters, by the way, for this session of our newsletters.
I think Kate had planned to put those in there.
But the, so familiar with being on WAMPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So when we went through the drought, you referenced 2003 made this change, but our ozone measurement in this area seemed like back a few years ago, we were having some bad readings and the result was from Oklahoma burning, and it was blowing up. So I guess my question is, is KDHE, are we talking to our neighbor states about things like ban in a month of April and things like that? Are we all on the same page?
I can't speak for KDHE. I know they do talk to the neighboring states, though. I don't know about that issue. But I am, I think it was 2012 when that happened, when we had smoke coming up from Oklahoma. And, you know, you open your door and you smell the smoke, and you're wondering if something's on fire nearby, and it was from another state. And that's what happened with our Flint Hills going into Tennessee. The winds were from the west and blew it over to Tennessee. So it is a regional issue, it's not just a local issue.
Right. And you said we're one of 14 counties?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? But the others can burn? Okay.
Right. They picked the counties in the Flint Hills, our county, and I think it was Wyandotte because of the population base. And the whole purpose is to try to cut down on the overall smoke that's being generated in addition to us being generated by the Flint Hills, and trying to get the ranchers to better burn their area where the soil moisture is correct for that, and the winds are down.
Last question. Cigar smoking is still okay?
Yes.
I didn't hear. Susan, you want to say anything about the tire roundup?
Sure.
Heard it, I preempt.
It's later in April, and we'll be announcing it then as well, but April 18th, and 19th, and 20th, we'll be having a free tire roundup. 18th is for government and townships bringing in trash and the businesses, because we want the larger trucks to be separated from the smaller vehicles that citizens would bring. 19th and 20th are for them. It's from nine to three at the Sedgwick County West Yard, which is at 47th Street, South and West Street on the northwest corner. We'll be advertising it and get the word out.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Thanks for coming on briefness on the burn ban.
Thank you.
All right, Kate, did I steal some of your thunder?
Not at all. My one other reminder would be to remind folks that we do have the temporary restrictions put in place on wind and solar energy operations. There will be a public forum on Thursday, March 28th, at the Sedgwick County Zoo at the Cargo Learning Center. That'll be at 6:30 PM. And now until April 26th, residents can leave a note on our webpage, www.sedgwickcounty.org, as well if you can't make it to the public forum on Thursday. On the agenda this morning, commissioners, we have two advisory board appointments, updates to the Wireless Communication Master Plan, and the Unified Zoning Code Regulations of Wireless Communications Facilities, proposed modifications to the Sedgwick County Waterwell Advisory Board, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
All right. Thank Kate, appreciate it. And welcome everyone who's joined us here today and online on KPTS. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I have one individual signed up to speak on public agenda, and it's our good friend, Lonnie.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu in Wichita. And on behalf of the Sedgwick County Association of Cities, I volunteer to express their appreciation to the county for the information that they have been getting. 16 or 17 of your cities are members. They meet in a different city every month. This last Saturday, we met in Keachai, and that gives each city a chance to share with the other cities what they're doing and what marketing's going on, and they've built strong relationships between themselves. Several months ago, they expressed a desire for more information from the county. So Commissioner Howell coordinated, who has been regularly attending for three years, and they really appreciate that. So Commissioner Howell worked with Kate, prepares a summary, and so every month, we go over, Commissioner Howell goes over what the county has done that past month, and there's more and more discussions every time, to the point they're still wanting more information. They enjoy their relationship that they've built, and they want to build stronger with the commissioners, and of course, they invite the rest of you, whenever you may be able to attend, to show there. So I just wanted to express their appreciation to the commission. I think six different cities this last Saturday was specifically thanked Commissioner Howell for sharing that information. So I just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Lonnie, I want to say thank you for the good comments this morning, and I agree that we call SCAC, that's the acronym. We say it is called SCAC, Sedgwick County Association of Cities. But it has been a great experience to interface with the various cities, and I'd like just encourage more of them to attend. But this last, this last Saturday, we actually went a little bit long talking about our bylaws, and I wanted to just, you kind of opened this up. I would do this during other later date, but I'll just do it now. That is that the Association of Cities has changed their bylaws, and they would allow Sedgwick County to become a non-voting member. And I would like to encourage us to consider that. It's $150 per year. We have a seat at the table. They would love us to continue to attend. We can have one of us attend and provide that information, doesn't have to be me necessarily. But I would like to see us continue to be at those meetings and provide information as much as we possibly can, and of course, take action items back to the commission from the cities. It becomes a conduit of information back and forth, and so I would like to have us consider doing the non-voting membership of one year, $150 per year. So I think that's a point where I don't know what the appropriate time would be, but please think about that, and hopefully, we can bring that up as an item of business at some point. And so I want to say thank you again, Lonnie.
Thank you, Lonnie. I appreciate it. Lonnie was the only one signed up to speak today. If anyone else in the audience would like to speak, though, now is an opportunity. Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item A, resolution appointing Monica Marks to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor. This item is a resolution to appoint Ms. Monica Marks to the Animal Care Advisory Board. It's recommended by Commissioner Cruz that she be appointed to replace the current member who was appointed by a prior commissioner. The term is to be for four years, and I understand that Ms. Marks may not be present, but regardless, I'd ask that you recommend that, that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution appointing Monica Marks to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. She was unable to come today, but I...
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item B, resolution appointing Autumn Black to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Commissioners, Karen Powell, again, Deputy County Counselor. Ms. Autumn Black is being recommended for appointment by Commissioner Cruz to the Mental Health Advisory Board. She's, again, replacing a former appointee to this board by a prior commissioner. The term will be a four-year term, expiring March 19th, 2023, and I believe Ms. Black is in attendance and ready to be sworn in. So I'd recommend that the resolution be approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Hi, Autumn. Thank you so much for being in attendance today. I do make a motion, we adopt the resolution appointing Autumn Black to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. And I'd love for you to say something about your business, actually, after this, too, if you wouldn't mind.
Just for you, Lacey.
Okay.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we'll get you sworn in now.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God. I do. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. Karen, you can speak now, and then we need to get your signature on the document after that.
Okay. So Lacey wanted me to speak a little bit about my business. I am the owner of United Vibes Culture &amp; More, which is a culture store which implements just putting culture back into our community, cultural unity, cultural awareness. I'm also the owner of the Queen X Podcast, which is a podcast that empowers and encourages women of color. I'm a big advocate on mental health, which I think is why Lacey referred me for this advisory board, and it's something that I'm very passionate about, and so I'm very happy that you guys accepted me, and I'm ready to do some work.
Thank you. I think you're going to bring a really good voice to the Mental Health Advisory Board, and I'm excited that you've agreed to serve. If you haven't had a chance to check out her business, go in. And you also do a breakfast. Do you want to talk about that just a second?
I do. So we do a books and breakfast on the second and third Saturday of every single month. We feed families and kids for free, totally for free. We take donations from the community. They bring us books. They bring us funds so that we can fund the breakfast, and it's a chance for us to sit down and get to know our community, get to know the people around us. Since my business is in the community, I want to know in depth the people that I'm serving. There's no TVs, no games, like technology-wise, but we do have board games and books. We read and have different activities with the kids, and everything is free. So we do everything out of the kindness. We have donations that, or volunteers that come also to donate their time. So it's just really a chance for us to get one-on-one and really personal and find out what exactly it is that our kids and their parents need in the community. So that's kind of why, another reason why I wanted to join the board, is because I get the chance to sit down with the kids one-on-one and understand what their needs are, and this helps me to be able to figure out different ways in my business that I'm able to help them. So being able to also pass that information along to the Mental Health Advisory Board, I feel like is very important.
Thank you so much for being here today. I appreciate your service.
You're welcome, Lacey.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Thanks for being here, and thanks for what you do for our community. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item C, updates to the Wireless Communication Master Plan and the Unified Zoning Code Regulations of Wireless Communications Facilities.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning. Excuse me, Scott Knabel with the Metropolitan Area Planning Department. My presentation is pulling up here. The item before you today is an amendment to the Wireless Communication Master Plan, as well as associated amendments to the Unified Zoning Code to allow us to implement that plan. There's two primary reasons that we're bringing this forward to you today. Back in 2016, the state of Kansas adopted this statute 662019 that changed the way local units of government are allowed to regulate wireless communication facilities, or cellular towers, as a lot of people call them. The process that the county used up until that time did all of these three things that are listed here. When an applicant filed for a new application, we required them to document that they could not locate their antennas on another facility, or colocation, as that term is often called in the business. It also, the statute, interestingly enough, also prohibits the county from evaluating the merits of locating antennas on existing towers and other facilities on our own accord, just based on our own knowledge of the availability of accomplishing that. So that's an interesting approach, and that's something that the state prohibits us from doing. And in fact, we just recently had, last week, I think it was, a case in the city where the planning, we had to advise the planning commissioners to not go down that line of discussion, because they were aware of facilities where perhaps antennas could be located, but yet the state does not allow us to include that in our decision-making process. We also cannot allow applicants to agree to permit future colocation if they build a new facility, which was our approach. Our approach was to minimize the number of facilities by doing this analysis to identify whether or not there was an existing facility that could be used, and if not, when we did permit a new facility, design it in a way such that it would support future colocation so that another facility did not have to be built in the vicinity. Well, that changed in 2016, and actually, in 2016, the county adopted the zoning code regulations that addressed that situation. The city did not, and so that has put us in an interesting position going forward. But the resolution, as it relates to these items, would have you adopt a resolution rescinding your 2016 resolution, adopting a resolution that matches what the county, or what the city, excuse me, adopted a couple of weeks ago, so that the Unified Zoning Code, in fact, is unified as it relates to the city and county, which it is not as it relates to wireless communication facilities now. It has two different sections, one for the city and one for the county. The main reason that we're here in front of you right now today is that the Federal Communications Commission issued a declaratory ruling in October of 2018 that went into effect in January that indicates that municipal governments are required to permit what's called a small cell facility, which is, it's defined in the ruling based on its size and height, but it is the type of facility that wireless companies are now beginning to use more frequently as they attempt to address the capacity of their systems. They have to provide more frequent and shorter facilities, primarily to provide data service to people who are using their cellular phones, not as phones, but as data devices. And in fact, there are many of the devices now that are connecting to cellular signals aren't phones at all. They're tablets and computers and other types of devices that provide access to the internet. And so those small cell facilities are what the companies are starting to utilize to bring that service. It also then, as the companies start to establish their new form of transmission, which is called 5G, and roll that out nationwide over probably the next several years, we anticipate these small cell facilities will be the predominant type of facility that gets installed to do that. It's important that we bring this to you today, because that FCC ruling says you must allow those facilities in your right-of-way, but if you are to enforce any design standards on what those facilities look like, where they're located, those standards have to be published. And I've got April 14th, 2019, on this slide. I think it is actually April 12th, 2019. It was 60 or 90 days from a certain date, and I think the, given that February was one of those months, I may have calculated that incorrect, but regardless, were you to approve this today, we will meet that publication deadline. Couple other things in that ruling. We are now given 10 days to determine that an application that is submitted for a wireless facility is complete. If it's not complete, we have to submit back to the applicant a written statement of what is missing and allow them to complete that application. The other piece that is, that is a clarification that is different than the way we have been processing these, there has been for better part of a decade or more requirement that we process these applications within 150 days. The state statute that was adopted in 2016 says that if we do not process them within 150 days, they're deemed approved, and the FCC ruling clarifies that that application is all of the approvals that are required to permit a wireless communication facility, not just the zoning approvals. In the past, we have been operating under an understanding, and a lot of people have as well, that each phase of the process, the zoning, the building permit, had 150 days for review, and that's not the case. It is all of the, all of the reviews, zoning, building permit, have to be completed within 150 days. So one of the things that is in your, in the wireless plan is a recommendation that we require, if you are submitting an application to build a wireless communication facility, that you submit both applications at the same time. You submit your zoning application and your building permit application at the same time so that they can be processed concurrently, so that we have the ability to complete that within 150 days. At the Planning Commission public hearing, when we presented that idea, there was representatives from the wireless industry who, interestingly enough, didn't like that, even though they've been the ones pushing that all of these things be processed faster, giving some indication that they felt like they couldn't do, couldn't prepare and do those things within that specified timeframe. And so in the discussion with the Planning Commission, we came up with an option of a tolling agreement, which is something we've used in the past. What that means is, is that you submit your application for zoning, and you sign the tolling agreement indicating that this 150-day, you, as the applicant, agree that this 150-day review process is suspended at the end of the zoning process, and then starts again. So it takes, say, 75, 80 days to complete the zoning process. That time, that 150-day, what they call shot clock stops, and then doesn't restart until you submit your building permit application, which then gives us another 75 days, for example, to complete the building permit process. So that is one of the primary changes that is recommended in this wireless plan. Other things that are included, we are removing all requirements regarding colocation in speculative facilities. That is actually something that the county, actually, the county has already taken, but will be a unified requirement in the code if this is adopted as presented. We're establishing design guidelines for facilities located in the right-of-way, and you have an item on your consent agenda to add that process to your county code in terms of the permitting process as it relates to facilities in the right-of-way. And then another piece that we're doing is that we're allowing governing bodies to modify what are called supplementary use regulations. Those supplementary use regulations apply to a variety of different types of uses, typically when those uses are permitted by what's called a conditional use, and they establish additional standards. The, we've been operating under an administrative interpretation that the supplementary use regulations can be modified by the governing body, and so we're just codifying that interpretation of the code to allow that, and that things like, if you'll, some of you, I think, were on this body when there was consideration of a wireless facility east of Derby, where there was some question about what the setback of that tower would be. That setback is a supplementary use regulation that is allowed, would be allowed to be modified or even waived by the governing body through this proposed change. These are examples. The two on the left are the types of monopole and lattice towers that are encouraged by the design guidelines in the plan. The image on the right is the type that is discouraged. The monopole, the single pole with the antennas mounted close to the pole with the wiring that goes down the inside of the pole is the preferred. If you are to do a lattice tower, which is the left and the right image, the preferred approach to using a lattice tower is to attach the antennas immediately adjacent to the, to the tower itself, as opposed to on platforms that are extended outward from the... the tower itself as opposed to on platforms that are extended outward from the tower and then also then to run the wiring down the girders of the lattice tower as opposed to in the middle where they're exposed like on that image on the right. You can see that the image on the right presents significantly more blocking of the sky, which makes the facility much more visible from a much greater distance. The right-of-way design guidelines that were including in the plan and in the county's case, in the county code, is to indicate that when a facility is proposed, that the adjoining properties, and this would be the properties on both sides of the street where the facility would be located, would be notified, given an opportunity to provide comment, and their comments would be considered in the ultimate decision about where and how to locate that facility, adjoining their property. There are guidelines regarding the location, which are primarily two things. Well, I take it back. The location, the preferred location is, is that the facilities be located on common property lines as opposed to in the middle of the front of a property. Typically, buildings are required to be set back from the side property line so that if you set, if you install the facility on the side property line, then it's most likely not going to be in front of a house or other type of building that is located on that property. The wiring itself is required to be underground or within the pole that is established unless there is some form of easement that allows it to be located elsewhere. There's design requirements regarding the antennas and equipment, and those design guidelines basically address the antennas need to be flush-mounted to the pole that they're attached to, and the equipment itself that does the communications, the radio equipment that makes the antennas work, needs to be installed in a place that is either right adjacent to that pole or screened in some way, and then both of those need to be of a similar color to the pole itself. I'll show you some, I'll show you a couple of examples of how that looks here in a second. Public safety has to do with not blocking sightlines of driveways and those sorts of things. The height requirement is that we would be looking for poles that were no taller than 10% greater than the existing poles that were in the right-of-way in that vicinity. And then the poles comment here is, is that we're looking for reuse of existing poles over construction of new poles, and I can show you an example of that as well. So the image on the left is a small cell facility that's located in the Delano District at Douglas and Seneca. The antenna is on the top of that light pole. You can see the equipment between the sign and the pole immediately adjacent to that pole. Were this facility to actually match the guidelines that we're establishing, that equipment box also would be black as opposed to white so that you had a matching equipment box and antenna and pole. On the right is a, and in this case, the other piece here is, is that that light pole was already there. They took the existing light pole out, replaced it with a pole that had an antenna on it, such that we were not adding a pole. There was already a pole in that, so the antenna on the top and the box to the left of the pole are the new things that appear in our environment. The image on the right is an example where a pole was added to the right-of-way for the sole purpose of wireless communications. And you can see in this case, this is an example, in addition of adding a pole, which is what we're discouraging, you have three different colors. The pole itself is wood color, the antenna is a brown or a black, and the equipment box is white. Were that to meet our requirements, all of that would be of the same color, even if you did end up having to add that pole. And you can see that there aren't light poles in the right-of-way in this location, which is why that pole was added. So with that explanation, the recommended action is to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the Wireless Communication Master Plan and the associated amendments of the zoning code and authorize signatures on the resolution and the publication of those resolutions.
Well, thank you, Scott. I appreciate that information. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Meister.
Scott, thanks. As you know, I was immensely involved in this.
I've talked to you about this before.
In 2016, and I'm embarrassed that our state was one of the leading states in adopting this, as you know. And then quickly, the wireless community took this Kansas ruling, and I think it was Iowa or somebody.
Yeah, I believe there are 26 or 27 states that have adopted this model legislation as it relates to wireless facilities, yes.
Yeah, and that it became quickly into the FCC world and federal and so. Anyway, I could have a number of questions, but I guess my main one is, on slide number six, I'm encouraged that we can actually incorporate these guidelines into our code between the city and the county. That's what we're adopting that would allow us to negotiate more with these wireless?
Yes, that is the position that we're taking. We've had the conversations with the legal counsel for both the city and the county, and there is nothing specific that we find that prohibits us from doing this.
Because I thought the ruling basically let them do whatever they wanted to do, is what I was originally.
Well, I think that there are officials with the wireless communication companies that are going to take that stance exactly. So we're going to have, I think, some conversations about this as we go forward, but it is our opinion as staff that we have the legal authority to do this.
Right. And for my fellow commissioners, this was not a problem that was going on in Cedric County or Wichita area. It was, there was charges and fees and all kinds of stuff going around in other parts of the state that accelerated the wireless companies to try to get this more uniform within Kansas and so we, as a result. But I was really worried about right-of-way and safety and the co-location thing is just so obvious that these companies should co-locate on the same tower. But they have the right to, in a way, they could just put another micro tower right next to an existing tower.
Yes, that is correct. And the, so the approach that we're taking, because we, the co-location analysis was intended to, well, did require them to submit information about their communication system, which is what they, the wireless companies did not want to submit. They consider it proprietary information, that if they provide it publicly, it's information that their competitors can use against them. And so, the approach that we're taking now is that these facilities present, you know, a visual impact in the built environment. And so, limiting the number of them reduces that visual impact. And so it's not a approach that's based on the communication need of the company. It is purely a compatibility with the surrounding built environment, the homes and businesses that are located in the vicinity and trying to put a facility in a place that minimizes what the plan calls the visual obtrusiveness of the facility.
Right. And I think the, and these are mainly, I think, micro towers. These are not the big cell towers that we're used to.
In the right-of-way, that's correct. And in fact, the FCC ruling, the term that they've started using is small cell and then macro towers are the terms that have become
I agree.
... in vogue recently. And it, the FCC ruling does not mandate that the macro towers be allowed in the right-of-way. Those would still be required to be located. Doesn't prohibit it, so we could do it, but the way the plan is laid out, those are encouraged to locate on real property as opposed to in the right-of-way.
And you made reference, this is really, I mean, the industry and the market is, this is really boosting capacity into the macro towers. And it's based on data, kids watching movies, games, all the stuff that goes on today with your wireless.
Absolutely. I've been involved with the wireless communication industry and our planning and regulating of it for over 20 years. And, you know, when I first got involved in it, the meetings we would come to, you know, only a few people would have a cellphone. I dare say everybody in this room has one on them now.
The, I'm cautiously encouraged that the communication companies, their desire is to, I don't think their desire is to flex the muscle and just come in because they do have customers.
Sure.
The last thing they want is a bunch of customers mad at Verizon or Sprint or something. And so, and to see, for instance, what, when I went through at InTrust Arena, you know, when you have a stadium, you can't get a signal and all of a sudden. And I think when I took the tour, they were showing me the wireless boosters in the ceiling, and they made it aesthetically pleasing, and you didn't even notice they were there. And now service is good in the arena and so. But the rules allow them to just do whatever they want to do and not to have to work with us.
And that's a good point, and I didn't reference that because there's a lot of nuances in here, but the state statute does actually allow, without zoning approval
Totally.
... the installation of wireless facilities in stadiums and other event centers.
Yeah, so it's something that if I could just vote against it, I would because I just, I think our Kansas Senate Committee that ran this through was wrong and it just allows intrusiveness into our, and when they go into a front yard of a property, which is what happened out east, it was incredible getting a phone call to, hey, there's somebody trenching my front yard and, not good. And ironically, the big property rights of our state, property rights, all that group remained silent on the thing for some reason. So anyway, it is what it is. And if any of the commissioners have any questions between you but myself, I'm fully aware of what's going on here and not in favor, but I think we're handcuffed to have to adopt our code, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the comments of Commissioner Meister, but I have a couple of other questions. I see in the master plan, it uses the words encourage and discourage. How are we communicating to these folks that we are encouraging or discouraging their plan? Do we have a way to communicate that? I mean...
Yeah, this plan, like other elements of our comprehensive plan, predominantly is available, you know, for download on our website. It also is referenced in the application instructions for a wireless facility, that compliance or conformance is the term that we use with the plan, is one of the factors that's considered when adopting or not adopting a request for a conditional use or other zoning action for a wireless facility. And then, of course, the other approach in the way that most people gain their knowledge of the, both the zoning and the planning is, is that on all of our applications, the very first thing that is recommended is that you contact the planning department and have a consultation with us as terms of what your rights and requirements are, and in that is when that gets explained personally to people.
So if they make an application for something we would say is discouraged, we would, I guess, maybe just remind them?
We potentially could recommend that it not be approved, yes.
Just a comment, maybe ask for your comment back, but on slide five, it shows the three towers there. First two are encouraged and the third one's discouraged because it appears to be a larger tower with those masts hanging off the sides, but I guess I would just wonder, those are not producing the same type of service. I think some of those may be TV towers or, you know, they have less number of dishes on there and one of them may be.
Right. The two images on the right, both of those have antennas on them for cellular service. The tower on the left, those antennas are for microwave data transfer. But you could, even on the tower on the left, what we call flush-mount the cellular antennas to the poles, you can do that as well.
Okay.
They typically don't do that because the preferred pole design is the monopole, and so they typically make application for those. These lattice towers that are shown on the left have some limitations on height. You really can't build something of that design much taller than about 120 feet.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to say, it looks like, technology-wise, whatever the needs of the tower are, may dictate what goes on that tower, but if there's a way to encourage a flush-mount antenna versus a mast-mounted antenna might be a good way to do that. And I do agree with about the idea of co-location. I wish we could encourage that, but to the extent we can't force them to co-locate, they can still co-locate if they choose to do that.
That's correct, and they will, quite frankly. It is constructing a new tower is a, you know, three or four or $500,000 proposition. And so, if they can, if there is an available location that they can rent space to install their antennas, from an economic standpoint, it makes sense for them to do so. And all of the companies will tell you that they predominantly use site selectors to find a, the first task of that site selector is to look within what they call a search ring, which is a geographic area for existing towers that they can locate on. The company will evaluate those from a communications and engineering standpoint and determine whether those work, and then if there aren't any, then they go back to the site selector and say, okay, find a site where we can build a new tower.
Is this only for data and cell, or does this also include things like TV and radio?
The plan itself addresses wireless communication of all type, including TV and radio, and we do, in Cedric County, have a number of very tall radio and television towers that we've, it's been a while since I've been before you to permit one, but those are covered by this plan as well.
Okay. Not really probably intended here, but tornado siren poles might be falling into this, I would assume.
Actually, no. Actually, a tornado siren pole is not classified as wireless communication.
Okay, it's interesting. And then finally, my last question would be this. Some of these poles are located very close to roads. In terms of the safety concern, are, is there a breakaway requirement for those poles?
Yes, the way they're designed, they are designed to crumple, if you will, as opposed to topple. And so, all of the designs of these towers are such that were they, from a wind standpoint, you know, exceed their capacity, they then break at a point and then the, everything above that is designed to just come straight down as opposed to toppling over. And I've seen video and it does work that way. Those designs are, I mean, the structural engineering does work that way.
I agree with Commissioner Meister. I don't think we have much choice here, so I'll be supportive of this. And just another point, the MAPC did consider this as well, and it was a 13 to 0 unanimous decision by MAPC, so I think everyone, as far as I can tell, seems to be agreeing that this is what we have to do today. So I'll support the resolution. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, thank you for the work that you put into this. I would like for the record, since Commissioner Meister brought up the Senate doing that, I did vote against that because, and I think there was only like three or four of us that actually ended up voting for it at the end of the day, but because the Wichita Builders' Association had lobbied strong against the bill, talked about problems they would have, and like Commissioner Meister said, it wasn't any issue that we were having in Cedric County. It was primarily Douglas, Johnson, Wyandotte area where they could not get poles or they were forcing these communication companies to build poles that looked like trees that were indigenous to that area. So they were spending $600,000, $700,000 on poles that it would look like it would just be in a forest, but it was actually a cell tower. I mean, that, some of the requirements that some cities were having were pretty outrageous, which caused this to happen across the entire state.
And I can confirm that. I was involved in the negotiations, if you will, with the Senate Committee, and that statement by the wireless communication companies was repeated over and over again that... companies was repeated over and over again, that Wichita and Sedgwick County are not our problem. That's not what we're trying to address. You're just being caught up in this.
Yeah, we were, we were victims to it. And we, we were trying to exempt certain areas out, and for some reason, it just didn't happen. But I believe the wireless companies jumped through every hoop before they ended up having to ask for this type of legislation. I think they tried to work with different cities, like we had always done down here. And like Pete said, there was, within the first couple months, in a very nice neighborhood, Wichita attorney has his house, his front yard being dug up to put a pole in. I mean, and different retailers were having it, and they're right in the middle of the parking lot. So, I mean, there, there, there were some problems with it. But hopefully, we'll get a lot of that straightened out. And, and this is gonna get us in compliance. And so that's why I'd be voting for this today, just so that we are getting a uniform code. So, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would add that the encouraging part is, is when you show that, a tower on top of a light, a streetlight pole. Those are the things that are reasonably good. And there's, there's other options too, that are all so reasonable. I just didn't, so I think if, if we have somebody come in and try to get aggressive, then we'll just have to, hopefully, our group can negotiate and make it reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, has Wichita passed this yet?
They did. They passed this a couple of weeks ago.
Very good. Well, I'm very familiar with the evolution of this, since I was chairman of the advanced plans of the Metropolitan Airplane Commission, when the big changes came down, as directed by the state legislature. We were very disappointed in what the state legislature did at that point in time, but we complied. I'm not sure that we got exactly what we need yet, but I will be voting in favor of this. Since this is a major change to our uniform code, it's not required, I don't believe, to have public comment. But I think if anyone in the audience would like to speak on that, I would give them an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion?
Well, I hate to be on record as the motion to approve this, but motion to approve.
I'll second for you, Pete.
Very good. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item D, a resolution to amend the composition of the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction.
Morning, Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Oh, excuse me. Chris Labrum, MABCD. And yes, before you today is a resolution to amend the composition of our Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction, due to some changes we've had in that area. So, the current resolution, the current board was composed in 2005. It's served well since. Purpose of the board is to, of course, advise the Board of County Commissioners and the MABCD on policies and procedures. And regarding any matters related to installation and maintenance of onsite domestic water wells, domestic wells are defined as two acres and less. So, any well use on a two-acre or smaller parcel is ours. Anything bigger than two acres belongs to the state and KDHE. Our current membership is comprised of three licensed registered water well drillers, a member of the Wichita Area Association of Realtors, Wichita Chapter of Mortgage Brokers Association, an On-Site Waterwell Advisory Board member, which is also an MABCD board, and a Kansas licensed professional geologist. The need for update, or the current issues we have there, is that the Mortgage Brokers Association is no longer viable, no longer exists. The Wichita Area Association of Realtors is now the Realtors of South Central Kansas. And I would like to thank the RCSK for continuing to support this board and continuing to provide membership, even after the change of their organization. Our licensed geologist retired some time ago. We've had no success in replacing that position. We've also found no interest in the geological community in holding that position. So, thus, our recommended positions would, and this after review of the stakeholders, the board members, and our staff, of course, recommends that we retain the three licensed well drillers, that we retain the member of the wastewater system board, that we replace the Mortgage Brokers Association with a public-at-large member that is defined as a Sedgwick County resident. We do, so this would be a position that, of course, would be made vacant by this. And we do have some interest in that already from the Conservation District, which would be a very great fit in that regard. We recommend that we replace the licensed geologist position with a licensed plumber. And we're defining that as a member holding a plumbing certificate, plumbing license. And then we're redesignating the real estate position to be a representative designated by the, or through the Realtors of South Central Kansas. These are, and that, we do have a position filled there now. And these all would be four-year terms. But we believe that that breakdown gives us a well-balanced and a very qualified board for these matters. And my recommendation is that BOCC approve the resolution. I'll gladly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. I know you came around and briefed each one of us on this individually earlier. But do any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Howell?
More of a, more of a comment. Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say, I appreciate you bringing this to us for our consideration. I think the changes are very reasonable. I like seeing the public-at-large position on this board. I think it's a healthy and necessary to periodically review the makeup of these, of these boards and, and amend them as needed to continue to create the diversity and the, the spectrum of opinions and technology for those particular fields of, 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 fields of study. So, anyway, I think this is a very, very good change, and I'm glad to support it, and be glad to make the motion when you're ready, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Can someone just remind me again how these people are appointed to this board? Like, how are they, who picks who's on this board?
So, Commissioner Cruz, these are all BOCC appointments.
Okay.
So, they would be recommended by staff to you all, and then would be appointed, just as those were earlier this, this morning.
Okay.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Commissioner Howell?
Yes, sir. I would make a motion, we would approve the recommendations of the, excuse me, make a motion, we would approve the resolution to amend the composition of Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on March 14, 2019.
You don't look anything like Joe Thomas.
Thank you for noticing, Commissioner. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Rick Durham, Deputy CFO. Pinch hitting for Mr. Thomas from Ferguson.
The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contract from March 14 resulted in five items for your consideration. The first item, AB3 Rock from Public Works, recommend to accept the overall low bid from Southwest Butler Quarry for an initial purchase in the amount of $180,000, and establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number two is CMB Gravel for Public Works, recommend that we accept the low bid from Associated Material Supply Company for an initial purchase in the amount of $22,000, and establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. The third item, 2019 Bond Tech for the Public Works also, recommend that we accept the low bid from APAC or APAC Kansas Incorporated Shears Division in the amount of $964,820.87. The fourth item, Modernized Elevators 6 and 8 at the Adult Detention Facility for Project Services, recommend that we accept the low bid from Tyson Krupp Elevator in the amount of $135,641. And the final item is Waste Tire Transportation Services for Environmental Resources, and recommend that you accept the low proposal from Resource Management Company Incorporated for $119 per scaled ton. And I will try to answer any questions that you may have. And I know that there are representatives from each of these departments to answer any questions. And if there are no questions, I recommend that you approve the items from the Board of Bids and Contracts.
All right, Rick. Thank you. Do we have any questions on the Board of Bids? Seeing none?
I can make a motion, we would approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please. Thank you, Rick.
Consent Agenda.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items F through N this morning.
Move we approve Fox Trot through November. Any discussion? Second?
Okay.
We have this motion in a second by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all for being here.
You didn't even recognize him.
The next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Commissioners, Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor, there are three, three legislative issues to report on in a, in a very positive note. The contents of our Senate Bill 129, which is the, the bill to allow, the election bill to allow voters to vote at any polling place on Election Day, it was incorporated into Senate Bill 130, which is another election-related bill. That, that 130 is the one that requires the election officer to contact a voter who has not signed an advance ballot to encourage them to come, encourage them to come in and sign it. And that amendment was made by Representative Carpenter from Derby. The bill was then forwarded to the House floor, and it will likely be considered next week. The 911 fees bill, House Bill 2084, we're continuing to work the bill. Elora Forshi, our Director of 911 Communications, is monitoring that very closely. But what we, what we know so far right now is that we're, we're striving to make sure that it doesn't reduce the amount of funding to 911 operations, and hopefully will increase the current fees, which are much needed. It's currently in the Senate Utilities Committee. The, the issue on regional mental health facility, there were a group of folks that went to Topeka on Monday to meet with Senator McGinn, who's the, the Chair of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, about this issue. And they discussed solutions about making a statewide mental health facility. The group from the county included Tim Kaufman and Joan Tammany. Robin Chadwick was also in that group. She, she is with Ascension Beat Christi, and I, I hear it was a very productive meeting. So, that's all I have to report at this time.
Very good. Well, rolling 129 and 130 together are very important to Sedgwick County.
It's a positive.
I think that is super news. Both of those make it more convenient for our citizens here in Sedgwick County to be able to vote. So, I think that's great news. The 911 bill, of course, could cost us a lot of money out of our general fund if we don't get that corrected. So, I appreciate the update on that. And as always, the regional mental health facility is something that is critical to what's happening here in Sedgwick County. So, I appreciate the staff that went up to testify on that. And hopefully, we'll get some movement on those. Do any commissioners have any questions on anything for legislative issues? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Do any commissioners have anything? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I actually was in Topeka on Monday and ran into Joan and Tim. But I was there for another, another exciting thing. Nico Hernandez, who you may all know is a bronze medalist with the Olympics, he was recognized on the House and Senate floors. And so I had an opportunity to just kind of tag along. We also, he is going to be the grand marshal for the inaugural year of the Wichita Chisholm Trail Marathon that happens this Sunday. So, it, the purpose of this first-year marathon is to foster a premier regional sporting event that magnifies the culture of our, of our great state, right? And it's also a qualifying course for Boston and New York marathons, as well as the Olympic trials. So, it'll go down Douglas on Sunday. So, it's very exciting. I was, Michael, the director, Michael Langston and his wife, and their three adorable children were up there. So, I just wanted to recognize that and make sure that we all don't get frustrated this Sunday when you're trying to drive down, because we'll have a lot of runners. I think it's bringing over 800 athletes to our city, which is really incredible. And I'm just excited to have an opportunity to tell you about it today.
Very good. And I believe Nico graduated from North High School.
Yeah.
I taught.
Yes. I am not running in it. Yeah, no.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. I just want to, I want to congratulate our friends across the street, Wichita City Council, for approving last night, late. If you're up watching late TV, you could, it was a marathon meeting. But they approved the, the baseball agreement and the development agreement. And I want to welcome the baseball ownership that have, had never been to Wichita before until this, this thing started. And they're moving 30 or 40 people here. And it's gonna be a fantastic thing for our region, and our county, and our city, and really, our state. So, I want to just extend the congratulations and a welcome to the, to the new, to the new owners of our area. And Michael was there last night. I was there last night. It was, had a lot of comments, pro and, pro and anti. And, but they did, they did a nice job, and listened to the citizens, so.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, like, like Pete said, I was at the meeting last night. I was very impressed at the amount of people that came. Six o'clock on a Tuesday night is not the most convenient time, but it was great turnout. It's a, Delano is a very important part of my district, and the neighborhood associations have been very vocal about this new ballpark, some for, some against. But, but it was great to watch that. We've got a community meeting tonight in Clearwater at 6:00 at the Middle School regarding the intersection of 71st and 135th. And there'll be a number of county staff members there to assist, to see if there are any solutions we can achieve with trying to mitigate some of the car accidents and problems that we've been having there. So, anyway, I appreciate all the staff that's coming out tonight, and hopefully, we'll figure something out. And if you're watching, if you're in the Clearwater area, it's tonight, 6:00 at the Middle School. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, I guess, tell anybody that might be listening. I'm getting lots of phone calls and people commenting on, on their property tax, should say, their, their valuations for their, their personal property valuations that were mailed out May, March the 1st. Just as a reminder to anybody who might be interested in this, if you want to make an appeal, to schedule an informal hearing on, to, to appeal that appraisal, you have until the end of this month to send that notification back into the appraiser's office. Just in case anybody wants to make that appeal, they need to act between now and the end of this month. So, I want to make that clear to anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last thing. I know Kate started at the beginning of the meeting, but a reminder to everyone, on March the 28, 6:30 PM, at the Cargill Learning Center over at the zoo, we're going to have some public comment period on both wind and solar energy, see what kind of changes we may want to make to any kind of rules and regulations involving those. No decisions have been made. The Sedgwick County Commission has not taken any position for or against, but we want to hear what the public has to say on those issues. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Did you want to mention about our tour yesterday?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, do you want to? Okay. Commissioner Dennis and I were able to go and visit the Sedgwick County Extension Office. They have a new director, Jennifer Brantley, who's doing a fantastic job. And we're gonna be looking for ways to get the message out about different things that they offer for citizens all across the county that would have zero to do with normal farm activities, that I think a lot of people are under the impression it's all that they do. So, so we're gonna be looking at ways to maximize that relationship, since a substantial amount of money goes from the budget to the Extension Center every year.
Right. And their SHIC program over there is one area that I get more positive emails on. We do get a few negatives here and there, not on SHIC, but on other subjects. So, it's always a great thing to see positive emails coming in on a project. But the SHIC program is to help folks that are trying to navigate their way through the medical Medicare issues on trying to find out what kind of plans that they need. They do a great job there. In addition, they, they do a lot of things that some of our other departments are involved in. And that's one of the things that Commissioner O'Donnell and I talked about afterwards, is that they do some things. that they do some things that our health department's doing, and maybe we can team up with them there. They do some things that our aging folks do, and maybe we can team up there and work together and make it a little more synergistic. So it was a very nice little discussion that we had yesterday with the brand-new director over there. Anyway, I don't see any other comments this morning. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 10:25 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship to discuss settlement of a lawsuit, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no later than 10:25.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. We are in recess.
Someone in the U.S. dies from suicide. It's the 10th leading cause of death in America, killing more than 44,000 people each year. Truth is, most people thinking about suicide don't actually want to die, but need help staying alive.
When I felt suicidal, I came to the Community Crisis Center.
A 24-hour resource center for mental health assistance and suicide prevention.
Where I spoke with a therapist and discussed my feelings.
By providing face-to-face interaction.
It was determined I'd be admitted to the Crisis Observation Unit.
For crisis treatment planning.
To work with a case manager to come up with a plan to ensure my safety.
Clinical staff are ready to help.
They are always friendly and supportive.
Going above and beyond.
To help me if I begin having increased urges to hurt myself.
With the encouragement and support from the Community Crisis Center.
I am currently 323 days self-harm free.
Educating yourself and others on the warning signs can play a crucial role in saving someone else's life. If you or someone you know is contemplating suicide, take it seriously and get help. Call the Community Crisis Center today at 316-660-7500.
Welcome to the new tag office located at 5620 East Kellogg Drive in Wichita. This space will be a lot larger. We will have a total of 25 clerks working in this location. We will be able to provide better efficiencies to better serve our customers. In this location, they'll be able to do any ADA transactions, registration renewals, and title work. So you will not be able to get your driver's license here. But the other addition is the Kansas Highway Patrol is not going to be located in this The three satellites that we are consolidating are at the Brittany Center at 21st and Woodlawn, the other one in Wichita located at 21st and Mays Road behind Delon's at Chadsworth Shopping Center, and then our third one is in Derby located at 212 Greenway. We felt that as a managerial decision, it would be better to combine those three offices into one larger office after we've seen such great success at the 2525 West Douglas Tag Office. It's going to reduce some staff time, it's going to reduce stress time, it's going to improve morale, and it's just going to be better for the citizens overall. I know all the small towns would love to have their own tag office, so what we're working on right now is the possibility of getting a kiosk solution. Johnson County has got them in their tag offices, but I don't know if theirs is the solution that I'm looking for for Sedgwick County. I've been working with Kansas Department of Revenue on some different options, but it'd be very limited to where we could put those kiosks. So that's why we're going to do a request for proposals, see what other options are out there to get us the best fit at the best price for our county. You can renew by mail or via the ICANN app. Customers are welcome to go to the office at 2525 West Douglas. I also highly recommend not waiting until the last day of the month to come. That's when we seem to always be the busiest. We always have been, we always will be. One of the best things that we've ever implemented in Sedgwick County is the online virtual waiting system, Qless. You can go out to the county website, and you can get on via any kind of electronic device. You can get your virtual spot in line. It will send you text messages on how long your wait times are, and it's been very, very, very helpful. The satellite offices at Brittany, Chadsworth, and Derby will close at end of business on Friday, December 7th, and then the new Kellogg Tag Office will open at noon on Monday, December This new location will be more convenient for our customers and staff. I am happy that we are finally able to complete this project.
I want to welcome everyone to this very important event that's involving our EMS. Our EMS is something that I am very proud of in Sedgwick County and have fought hard to make sure that we keep it the premier organization that it is, and it's one of only a handful across the United States that is fully accredited. Post 8 was originally, came into service in 1991, and it's been an active post ever since that period of time. However, if you'd have seen it just not too many months ago, this was kind of a disaster, actually. When I first walked through it, it needed an awful lot of work.
Several years ago, the plan was to tear this place down, buy some land somewhere else, and build a new one for $1.9 million. We kind of asked some questions about that and said, let's think about doing something else. We ended up with this, a remodel for a little over $400,000. That's still not cheap, but it saved $1.5 million, and I think we're going to have a fantastic facility here. This is an example of making good decisions, of supporting our first responders on public safety in a cost-effective way. I think the taxpayers can be proud of what we have, our EMS folks can be proud of what we have, and I look forward to this facility continuing to serve the community for many, many years to come.
I think it's a great improvement from what it was. It definitely allows for an additional truck in here and more space to move around. We're not sitting on top of each other. We have a place to cook, so that's great.
I was stationed up here for over 10 years, and over that time, you saw just a subtle decline in the facility, but boy, they've come in and just redone everything nice and ready to come back and serve this part of the community again.
This is a big day for the community up here in the north end of Sedgwick County. We renovated this building for $400,000. Originally, the project was scheduled to be a total demolish and redo and cost $1.9 million. We saved $1.5 million, but at the same time, we have a terrific facility that's been renovated. It's in a perfect location, and I think the crews will really enjoy it, and I think the community will benefit greatly.
I want to welcome everyone to this important event. Really, a core priority that we have here in Sedgwick County is having a safe and secure community, and that's provided with our EMS as a very key part of it. Sedgwick County continuously looks for ways to enhance our services to support our residents. This new post will expand our coverage and improve our response times to the outer areas of Sedgwick County. We also want to note that just yesterday, we established a new ambulance service in Garden Plain, and that provides better coverage on the western half of Sedgwick County. So we're responding to the needs of our residents across Sedgwick County.
Thanks to all of you who are here this afternoon to help us with this ceremony to open this outstanding facility. This new facility, I think, is strategically located, and it's part of our long-term strategic plan to provide for growth in our community and in our county. And this location here, with its capacity for two crews, accomplishes that goal. It's a pre-engineered building, and one of the advantages of doing that is that it saves us quite a bit of money. Originally, this project, I think, was on the books for as much as $1.7 million, and I think we end up having just right around $1.1 million in a facility. I think this will be a great facility. It'll serve all our citizens in total, but especially those in northeast Sedgwick County. It's a great facility, and I'm glad that you all are here to help us celebrate the opening.
Very much looking forward to it, because right now, we're sharing space with a fire station, or in a fire station, and this is going to give us the room that we need to really do our jobs much better. As a paramedic, this is a great building. That'll help us serve the citizens in Sedgwick County and in this part of Wichita.
This is going to help northeast Sedgwick County, as most people who reside out here, who have occasion to travel out here know, there's been somewhat of an explosion in both residential and commercial and business activity. So that means a lot more people, and that comes with that, is need for emergency services. I am really pleased that we were able to get this project completed before I left office, and I know that our project services department, Tonya Cole and Sandy Angelov, worked real hard with the construction company and the architects to get this done while I was still here. And although I'm not the focus of this project, it is kind of fun to be part of the ribbon-cutting in my last week of office.
personnel from the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. The training center requires all applicants seeking the position of police officer, deputy sheriff, or detention deputy to pass a series of physical agility tests. The tests are designed to evaluate the physical fitness, the physical agility, and the strength of the applicant. Here is what you can expect and what you will need to do to pass the physical agility tests. All applicants should wear clothes they can move in and be comfortable in. Athletic clothing, like a t-shirt and shorts or sweatpants, is a good example of proper clothing to wear for the physical agility tests. Also, wear athletic shoes with good traction. Sandals are not allowed. The first physical agility test is push-ups. You will do as many as you can in one minute. Here is what a proper push-up looks like. Your feet should be no more than shoulder width apart, hands in line with your shoulders, and hip and torso in a straight position. You will be required to go all the way down within inches of the mat or until the elbows are at 90 degrees, and then back up. Be sure to maintain a tempo during the test so each push-up is done correctly and counted. The second physical agility test is sit-ups. Once again, you will be asked to perform the maximum number of sit-ups in one minute. Here is what a proper sit-up looks like. Notice that your knees are slightly bent, your feet are flat on the ground, and arms crossed over the chest. You will then lift your upper body from the mat until you are at or near a 90-degree angle, or when the elbows are on the knees, then back down. Only proper sit-ups will be counted. The third physical agility test is called the Illinois Agility Run. This is a timed course that assesses an applicant's speed and agility. You will begin the test on your stomach with your fingertips behind the starting point and feet together. On the start command, you will get to your feet as quickly as possible and sprint to the top of the course and touch the line with one foot. You will then sprint back down to the bottom end of the course at the starting area. You will then weave through a series of cones to the top end, then weave back. After completing the weave, you will sprint to the line at the top of the course, touching the line with your foot, then sprint back down to the bottom of the course and finish line. Time will stop after you cross the finish line. You must finish the course without knocking over any cones. The final physical agility test administered is called the multi-stage run, or the beep test. The purpose of this test is to measure cardiovascular fitness and maximum oxygen uptake, or the VO2 max. You will start on a designated line and be required to run a distance of 20 meters to another line marked at the other end. An audible signal, or beep, will tell you when to run each time. As the test progresses through a series of levels, the time between the beeps will become shorter. You will continue to run from one end to the other until you are unable to keep up with the pace of the test. The monitor of the test will signal a warning if you fail to reach the line in time. You will have to stop if you fail to reach the line on two consecutive attempts. The monitor will announce the level in which you reached before stopping. Please remember the level you reached so it can be recorded later. In order to pass the physical agility test required by the Wichita Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center, the applicant must complete each test and obtain a minimum cumulative score of 20 points. Scores are based on an individual's age and gender. You are encouraged to practice these tests before your evaluation. They can easily be practiced anywhere without any special equipment. Wichita Police Department applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3810, or online at www.wichita.gov/wpd. Sedgwick County Sheriff applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3800, or online at www.sedgwickcounty.org.
An intern, or?
Hopefully, future intern.
Okay.
Is in need, so she works in conference now, but she's doing the master's in public administration.
Okay.
And so she gets to shadow me for days.
Oh, you're lucky. Yeah. Go buy a lottery ticket.
Kate, at this time, I'd like to call a meeting back to order for the Board of County Commissioners, state that during our executive session, no binding action was taken. At this time, I'll turn it over to Karen Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item that I have before you now is a recommendation for settlement of a lawsuit and that results as the tragic death of Robert Coonsy III. He was an employee of the county with the sheriff's office, a deputy on duty, who died in the course and scope of his employment. This was September 16th of 2018. He survived by his wife Kathleen Coonsy and Alyssa Coonsy, his minor child, and we, as a part of his death on duty, work comp coverage does apply, and this went through the Work Comp Administrative Law Judge, and a settlement was reached, and we would recommend that the county commission approve that settlement and authorize the payout according to the terms of the settlement.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Powell? Seeing none. Deputy Coonsy was definitely a hero. He touched the lives of all the folks here in Sedgwick County. We honor his service, and I think that our folks here in Sedgwick County, not only the staff, especially the staff from EMS, from the Fire Department, from the Sheriff's Department, from Finance, HR, from our legal department, everyone worked tirelessly to make sure that we took care of and honored Deputy Coonsy and took care of his family. This is one of the steps in that process. So I make a motion that we approve the recommendations by Commissioner, by Ms. Powell. Second? We have a motion in two seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Does anything else need to come before the Board of County Commissioners today?